I'm Helene Weinstein, Chair of the New York State Assembly's Ways and Means Committee, and co-chair of today's hearing. Today, we begin the 13th in a series of hearings conducted by the Joint Fiscal Committees of the Legislature regarding the Governor's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. It is also the last hearing that we will be conducting as joint committees for this budget. We were here until 11:45 yesterday. The public protection hearing went over 14 hours, so just forgive us if we get a little giddy as the afternoon goes on.
I'll only take 10 hours.
Okay, not a problem. It don't seem like a breeze. The hearings are conducted pursuant to the New York State Constitution and the legislative law. Today, as I think people know, this afternoon, we will be hearing testimony concerning the Governor's budget proposal for taxes. Let me just introduce, since we've had some shifting of members, the members from the Assembly who are here. Chair of our Real Property Tax Committee, Assemblywoman Galiff; Assemblyman Braunstein; Assemblywoman Dickens has stayed with us; Senator Liz Krueger, Chair of Senate Finance, will introduce her members.
Great. Diane Savino has stayed with us. We have been joined by Senator Betty Little, and we have been joined by Brian Benjamin, the Chair of our Revenue Committee.
And our ranker, Ways and Means Ranker, Assemblyman Ra is here with us also. And just for people who may have just come in this hearing, and perhaps members who haven't been here before, we have these countdown clocks. For the witnesses, that's the time for you to make your presentation. The government witnesses, the Commissioner will be 10 minutes. All other non-government witnesses, you have five minutes. The Chair of the Tax Committee will have, and Ways and Means will have, 10 minutes to ask questions of the Commissioner. Beyond that, when we get to nongovernmental witnesses, it's three minutes, five minutes for presentation, three minutes for members. And just to remind really the members and the witnesses that the three-minute timeframe is for both questions and answers. And we'll have another little warning for people once we get on to the nongovernmental witnesses. But right now, I'm pleased to welcome Michael Reed Schmidt, Commissioner, New York State Department of Tax and Finance, and thank you for adjusting your schedule so that you could be with us starting two hours after we were optimistically told you to be here. Please begin, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair Weinstein, Chair Krueger, members of the committee. My written testimony is in front of you, and it outlines a set of important initiatives we have ongoing at the Tax Department focused on improving the taxpayer experience. But in light of your time constraints, I just want to offer up top a brief reflection on why I believe those initiatives to be so important. Since I became Commissioner of the Tax Department last June, I've been struck by the sheer scale of the Department's operations. We process 26 million tax returns every year. We issue 10 million refunds. We answer 5 million phone calls. We send 17 million pieces of mail. And I think for people in our role, it's too easy to think about those numbers as statistics because the person on the other end of a letter that we send, that is a cousin, an uncle, a friend, and aunt. And we have to recognize that for them, interacting with the Tax Department is serious business. And it can even be a life-changing experience. So I believe in that context, we really do have a moral obligation to constantly be analyzing how we do our business from the perspective of the taxpayer. And that's why we have undertaken an important set of initiatives, from expanding our use of text and email communication, to enhancing our use of data analytics, to revamping our written correspondence program. And it's also why I'm very pleased that the Governor's executive budget this year includes a number of important initiatives geared towards enhancing fairness for New York's taxpayers. It expands the child tax credit for children below four years old. That closes an important hole, I think, in that law. It expands access to the earned income tax credit program. It continues the phase-in of the Governor's middle-class tax cuts. It cuts taxes for small business. So there are many proposals in this year's executive budget, and I look forward to taking your questions on them or on anything else about the agency. But before I do that, before I turn it over, I do want to use my time to highlight one particular initiative we have underway at the Department. It relates to how your constituents file their taxes. We have an arrangement, the Tax Department has a longstanding arrangement with tax software providers whereby those providers provide free-file software services to taxpayers making below $69,000. And the issue is that millions of people in the state are not aware of this free-file opportunity. And while for many people it makes sense to pay for tax software or pay for tax preparer, for a lot of people, it just doesn't make sense. And so we're undertaking an aggressive campaign this year to promote that program. There are some promotional materials that we've included in our written testimony for you, and I would be pleased if you would consider sharing those materials with your constituents as part of this effort. So again, thank you for your time today, and I look forward to taking your questions.
Thank you. We're going to go to Sandy Galiff, Chair of our Property Tax Committee.
I don't know whether, is this on? I guess it is. Yes. You know, we keep having this change in the STAR program. You haven't been here this whole time, but we went from $500,000 to $250,000, and this year, you're talking about $200,000 with not allowing people to have it credited to their school tax bill. What's the goal here? Where are we going? What's going to be happening next year?
So the executive budget proposal you reference would shift people who make between $200,000 and $250,000 into the credit program from the exemption program. So they're still getting their benefit, they're just getting it as a check that comes before their school tax they're due. I think, as you know, there's been, for the last several years, a gradual shift from the exemption program into the credit program. It started with people who buy new homes, right? They were in the credit program. And then last year, it included taxpayers who make between $250,000 and $500,000. We were able to administer that transition, I think, very successfully. We were able to identify the affected property owners. We were able to identify those who we could verify were eligible for the STAR program. And for those, they just received a letter, and we let them know, "You're registered in the credit program, you're going to receive a check for the amount of your STAR program, for the amount of your STAR benefit." And then for a smaller number, they had to come in and provide additional information so that we could verify their eligibility. With respect to your question, what is the overall goal here?
What's our plan in 2021?
Well, I would say--
Keep rolling back?
So this year's executive budget has this additional transition. So if enacted, the plan would be to, again, basically use the same process we used last time. I think we could, you know, last time was the first time we used it. I think we'll make process improvements even on what we did last year, which, again, I think was successful. But the vast majority of affected taxpayers will simply be automatically enrolled into the credit program. So they won't have to do anything. They'll receive their benefit as a check.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, I think the Governor is just trying to get one program off of expenditures and into revenues. So my concern is that you're going to continue. Next year, it's going to be at $150,000.
So I have--
Quick answer to that? I'm looking at the time, and it's going very fast.
I have no insight into what next year's budget is going to be. I think with respect to the broader transition, I can say that, as, you know, from my perspective as a state tax administrator, for a large tax program, which is what STAR is, it makes a lot of sense to have a statewide perspective in the administration of the program. This is a program that has 3 million property owners in it. It's several billion-dollar program. And we at the Department have access to information to ensure the integrity of the program that just simply, you know, isn't available at the local level, and the local assessors do--
All right. We learned in another hearing that only 2,000 people change from having it off their school tax bill into getting a check in the mail. So I don't think it's popular to move. But I have another question about the late, the issue of people getting the STAR program that haven't paid their taxes. How are you going to set up that system for us?
So the issue, as you highlight, was raised over the summer, which is that the current law suggests that people who don't pay their property taxes in the current year shouldn't get a STAR benefit. Of course, the STAR check goes out before they pay their property taxes, so there's an inherent contradiction there. So what the proposal does is, it says that for anyone who has past delinquencies of greater than one year, they wouldn't get their STAR benefit. So the way that would work in broad outline is that the county property tax officials would share the list of delinquencies outstanding for more than one year with the Department. The Department would then engage those taxpayers. We would let them know that unless they pay their property taxes, they're not going to get a property tax credit, a STAR exemption or a STAR--
How are you going to get that information from the local governments?
The legislation would require the counties to provide that information.
I said we're going to have other legislation that's going to come along on this.
No, that's included in the executive budget proposal.
Exactly. Okay. You are going to abolish the State Board of Real Property Tax Services. Why are we doing that? I know we're supposed to have five members. We only have, at this point, two or three?
Yeah.
And can there be a fair system in place if there's not another body determining the different tax cases?
I think so. The State Board of Property Tax Assessors, they do really great work. This is not a criticism of the work that they've done. It used to be a body that had a broader jurisdiction, and it's an unpaid position. It's a position that requires regular travel to Albany, and we've struggled, frankly, to fill seats. And in that context, the basic business of the Commission can be hard to exude because if you're missing one person, you don't have quorum, right? So there's, it just becomes kind of hard to do the business. I do think that we can ensure fairness in the structure envisioned in the executive budget. I think it's a, the provision for an appeal to the Commissioner is a common administrative remedy across the state. And it's consistent with the administration of other programs we have at the Department and other programs at other agencies. So, yeah, yes, I do think we can continue to administer the duties of the Board with fairness.
I got a few more minutes. Did I? Modernize and merging your real property tax forms and processes. The Executive is proposing to combine the property tax transfer form and the real estate transfer tax form into a consolidated form. Do you have a timetable, how long it would take to develop and implement this system? And how are you going to use the e-signature verification program?
I do not have a timetable. What I can say is the broad issue with the legislation is that, or the issue that the legislation seeks to solve, is that there are currently two different forms that are associated with real property transactions. And currently, there's just a lot of inefficiency with two paper forms coming in, and we'd like to make that process electronic, and we'd like to merge them together so that, from a taxpayer experience perspective, it doesn't feel like you're doing duplicate work. It feels like there's one thing you have to do, and you're able to comply with it. I think the nuance that the legislation tries to comprehend is the fact that some of the, one of the forms is protected by tax secrecy law, and the other is not. And so there's some information that, you know, we don't want to create any inadvertent exemptions from tax secrecy as a result of merging the forms, or make other information not available as a result of merging the forms. So there's provision in the legislation for continuing tax secrecy protections for the information that currently has those protections.
Okay, I'd just like to go back to the basic STAR. And have we done a cost analysis as to how much it costs to send out all these checks, many more now, as opposed to just having it taken right off your school tax bill?
I don't have a budget figure for you with respect to, you know, the internal cost of agency operations. I can say that we manage it effectively within the Department's budget. We have done a cost analysis to understand how much money we're saving the state through the information checks that we are able to do at our disposal with respect to the basic STAR program or the STAR credit program. And that total is $18 million. And again, that's because we have information at our disposal. We know if there's a married couple that has two homes, and they're claiming two STAR exemptions, we're able to identify that. If someone moves but doesn't sell their initial home, we're able to identify that. If someone moves to another state, we might be able to identify that. So between all those efforts, we're able to, I think, protect the integrity of the program and, you know, work with our partners in the assessment community to ensure that people getting their STAR benefits are entitled to those benefits under the law.
Commissioner, can we get an analysis done of what it's costing you? Because the public doesn't like it. It's easier the other way, and I don't know why we keep changing it. So if you could please get us how much it costs to send out all these checks. Thank you.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you, Senate.
Thank you. The Chair of our Revenue Committee, Brian Benjamin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Smith, thank you for being here. I'm going to jump right into it. Let's start with the Excelsior Tax Credit Program, which you're proposing to extend for another 15 years at the cost of $200 million per year. Can you give me a sense of how many jobs, take a step back, how many jobs has the Tax Credit Program facilitated since its inception? And just a sense of how you look at success? How do we know this is being successful or not? Obviously, you must believe it's successful if you want to extend another 15 years. But walk us through your logic as to how you came up with this proposal.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to be honest, I don't have those figures at my disposal. The program is administered by Empire State Development. We have, at the Department, have a role in obviously paying out the credits once they've been certified by ESD, but our role really is limited to that. My understanding is that the expansion or the extension of the program has to do with the fact that, under the economic development arrangements that ESD makes, they make long-term commitments. And so having some certainty in the program with respect to the availability of the credit and the out-years actually enhances the strength of the program, it's the ability to create jobs today. But again, in terms of the specifics of how the program has been implemented, I don't have specifics for you.
So, just so I'm clear on your answer, so basically, the way it works is ESD administers this program, and I guess the Department of Taxation is more of a pass-through? Like, how does that--
Yeah, so the ESD Board will, they will decide to award credits to a project, and then, as the project meets its milestones, they will, you know, approve those credits, pay them out. Once the taxpayer has that certified from ESD, they're able to come into the Tax Department in conjunction with their annual tax filings, for example, and receive the credit as a reduction in taxes or a refund or what have you. But the kind of certification and analysis really is with ESD structurally.
Okay, so let's move on. Am I to assume the film tax credit operates the same way?
It does. And I will say--
I'm at the wrong hearing, huh?
That's not, that's not true for--
You just missed them.
I know.
Yeah, it's actually not true for every credit. I mean, there are some credits where the Department has more of a role in auditing and determining eligibility, but for film credit, for Excelsior, those really are with ESD.
All right, so let's move on, because I'm pretty sure you have an answer for me on the Empire State Child Credit, correct?
Yes. Well, I hope so.
Okay, great. I am so excited to hear that. So let's talk about this for a second. So in your proposal, you did not cover all of the income that is covered with the federal child tax credit. So you have a scenario, for example, where a parent has a three-year-old and a five-year-old. They're getting, you know, and they're not able to get the state tax credit on one child, but again, on another child. Why did you make the decision to sort of cap the income at $50,000?
So that, that basic, and I'll kind of get back to your question, but that basic issue of the disconnect between the federal and the state credit, that actually goes back to the federal tax reform in 2017. There was an expansion of the federal tax credit, which both expanded the federal child tax credit, but made it eligible, made it available to higher-income people, I think, up to $400,000 in that instance.
That's right.
And the state law didn't conform to that. So we were already kind of anchored on a previous version of the federal credit. And then, as you point out, this expansion really, for this year, focuses on, of that population, the families that make less than $50,000 every year. I think one of the real benefits of the child tax credit program is that it is a mechanism for addressing child poverty, the needs of low-income children, the needs of low-income families. And so the proposal, as drafted, really is focused on that population.
Well, I will say, listen, you know, children under four tend to be more expensive than children over four. I mean, obviously, kids are expensive across the board. But as a new dad, I'm going to tell you, a one-year-old is not cheap. And so it just seems to me that, and I think I was told it would cost another $66 million to sort of cover the delta between the federal credit and the state credit. I'm not sure why you guys didn't just do that. I mean, this is $157 million, another 66.
That's certainly a conversation that could be undertaken in the context of budget discussions. And I will say, just to piggyback on your point about young children being most expensive, it's also young children who, and this is why I think this proposal is so important, it's young children who need the support most. I mean, there's economic research about how, you know, one-year-old, two-year-old, three-year-old kids, that's when your brain is developing, right? That's when interventions are most important from a public policy perspective. And so I think closing a gap where the kids who are zero to three don't get it, I think it's a very positive step.
Sure. All right, let's move on to the long-term insurance credit. Can you just talk to me about, what is the average cost for long-term insurance? Do you know that?
The aggregate fiscal for the credit now, under current law, I believe, is around $90 million per year.
Right, no, no, I'm sorry. Let's just break this down to per case, right? So I believe that 20% of premiums are paid--
Correct.
And no income limit presently is--
Currently, there's no income limit, and there's no cap on the overall value--
Correct.
--of the credit. And that makes our program, I think, one of the most generous in the nation, if not the most generous in the nation.
Right. So my question for you is, what is that average spend per case?
I do not have that specific answer for you. I can say, in terms of what this proposal would do, it's a 20% credit--
Right.
The cap on the credit is $1,500, which would mean that the credit would still fully support up to 20% of the cost of annual premiums of up to $7,500, which is still, you know, a meaningful amount every year for those families.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, I don't have any way to put that in perspective because I don't know what the average cost is in general. So then, how do I know--
Yeah, I think that's a good question.
Is this $1,500 cap, is that meaningful, or is that, like, irrelevant?
And I think it's the average cost, we'd have to look at, I mean, just from my own personal involvement with understanding long-term care, when you buy long-term care insurance in your life--
Yeah.
--the cost will shift dramatically, right? So for someone closer to retirement, it's going to be more expensive to provide that, to purchase that insurance than for someone earlier in their life.
Well, these premiums, from what I understand, you know, I don't have someone in my family who has long, at least I don't know about it. I hear these are very big numbers. So I would like to get some more information on what we're really talking about here. Now, let's move on to the extend a year, I'm sorry, extend hire a vet the tax credit. Now, it's come to my attention that the extend that credit is underutilized. Can you talk a little bit about what's, you know, what you're seeing in terms of, you know, obviously, we want to make sure, you know, we incentivize businesses to hire our vets, particularly disabled vets. And it's come to my attention that, you know, we're not fully maximizing the program, or at least the credit's not fully subscribed. So I'd like to get a sense of what you're seeing on that issue.
I guess, I don't really know what the dynamics are in terms of why the underutilization is there. I can say that I think our understanding is also that there's not a ton of utilization of this program. It can be a valuable program available for the support of hiring qualified veterans. So I'd be happy to engage in a dialogue to think about, is there stuff, is there anything we can do to--
Right.
--to promote it so that it's having the intended effect?
I mean, you're proposing to extend it for two years, so someone must think it's working. And so I'm just trying to understand, if it's working, why it's not being fully utilized?
Well, I think it is working for the individuals. It is supporting. I mean, it is being used to support individuals. So you wouldn't want to pull the rug out from under, the program to the extent it is working, but I do think there's capacity for growth.
All right, well, I would definitely like to get a better sense on what you're, you know, what you think is the reason why it's not being fully utilized, and what we can do to make sure that businesses know that this tax credit is out there, or that veterans know that it's out there. So I guess, you know, in terms of making it more successful, well, does this run out of your department, or is this run out of--
You know, I'm trying to think right now. I believe it's an as-of-right credit, which is, which basically means if an employer hires a qualified veteran, they're able to claim it. I don't think there's an agency that's responsible for administering it, but I could be wrong about that, so we'll have to get back to you.
All right, well, if you'll let me know, that'd be great.
Thank you, Assembly.
We go to Assemblyman Ra.
Thank you. One of the things that was changed last year was the internet sales tax. And I know it's been hard to get data because it doesn't get broken out. Is there any indication of how, you know, by county, how much additional revenue came in as a result of that?
We've taken a look. As you point out, one of the challenges that, when a company comes in, they don't necessarily come in and say, "Hey, we're here because of the new law. We're here because of the changes in the law." We have to undertake analysis to try to get a sense for what the new internet sales tax laws have really driven. And there are two kind of changes of the law with respect to both remote vendors and with respect to the online marketplace legislation that was enacted last year. So we have seen a significant uptick in registrations overall than we normally see on a year-to-year basis. I believe the number is around 1,500 new, you know, an increase in registrants of around that amount compared to what we normally see. And then the question becomes, okay, what does that mean from a revenue perspective? The budget last year projected that the fiscal for this year would be around $300 million for local governments, $240 million for the state. And it seems that we're on track to meet, if not exceed, those projections. But again, putting a specific number on is a little bit tricky, but just because of the way the nature comes in. With respect to individual counties who are interested in understanding how the law might have benefited them, they have some information at their disposal. We'd be happy to work with individual counties to help them understand.
Yeah, I mainly asked regarding the individual counties because, as I'm sure you're aware, the aim payments, which were formerly made by the state, are now the responsibility of the counties. And it's, you know, it's supposed to come from that piece of revenue. My county that I represent has, you know, three of the largest townships in the state, if not country, and many large villages, so it does have a fairly large share of that. I want to go back to the STAR changes for a second. So, I'll be honest, in my conversations with constituents-- So, I'll be honest, in my conversations with constituents, in terms of people that are in that group that kind of could switch over but weren't automatically being switched over and kind of have that incentive of the growth, they were confused as all heck as to whether or not they should. And, you know, I got a lot of calls in the office from people asking for advice and you kind of walked them through what the merits of it were because, you know, I didn't want any, the easy answer is, well, it'll grow in the future if you switch, so why not? But they also had to be aware that it could impact them in terms of having to, you know, pay that money upfront and get it back later on as opposed to just not seeing it on their property tax bill. So, if this happens in this budget and that number goes down, and I certainly agree with my colleague, that that's probably the long-term goal, that's gonna keep going down until eventually everybody gets transitioned to it, what has the department learned this year that maybe that could be put into play to make sure the homeowners of the state have adequate information to make the determination that's best for them?
Well, I think there are two issues that can be discussed in the context of your question. One is the reduction of the income limit from the 250 to 200. And again, for those individuals, they would be required to receive the credit as opposed to receiving the exemption. And so, our job as a department would be to make sure we're able to get those folks in as smoothly as possible. And as I indicated earlier, I do believe we were able to largely do that successfully last year with respect to that population. With respect to those who will remain under the limit, whether it's under current law, $250,000, whether the budget is, as proposed, is an enacted, $200,000, I think it's important that we provide as much information as possible to help homeowners understand and make that decision. We did, as a department, try to put out information to help homeowners make that decision. We provided the legislature with materials, if I recall, to help you navigate that issue with your constituents. And certainly, I am eager to work with you to help you answer all of your constituents' questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Savino.
Thank you, Senator Kruger. Good afternoon, Commissioner. So, I want to just touch briefly on the issue that Senator Benjamin raised about long-term care insurance. If you were paying attention to the budget earlier, this month, you would have heard at the Health Committee that one of the largest driving costs in Medicaid in this creating some of this shortfall is the increased cost that we're spending on long-term care. So, it seems almost counterproductive to reduce the tax credit because we should be incentivizing people to purchase long-term care so that we don't wind up having, because we're gonna pay for it one way or the other, really, to pay for it through the tax credit or we're gonna pay for it through long-term care coverage. So, I just want you to keep that in mind. I want to turn to two other issues, though, because while they're not related, they are. So, I can tell you right now, everywhere on Staten Island, that you can buy cheap cigarettes. They're either brought in from New Jersey, from Virginia, they're untaxed, they're Chinese cigarettes. I can tell you everywhere, I could save you the trouble of going out to do the investigation. If it were up to me, I would ban the sale of tobacco outright. There's absolutely no valuable purpose of nicotine. It is the most dangerous drug that has ever been manufactured. And the fact that we fund programs off the sale of it, which is killing people, is mind-boggling. That being said, if we adopt the approach in the governor's budget about the immediate revocation of the ability to sell tobacco on the first violation, we're just gonna feed this growing illicit market, which is already there. So, I would just say, we should really think carefully about that. Until we can figure out how to get people to stop smoking, we're not gonna solve the problem by taxing people who are running bodegas out of business. They will just adapt and they will continue to sell on the illicit market. That being said, we would have the same problem on cannabis. So, I understand the Office of Cannabis Management is gonna be housed in your wheelhouse, I think? Have you had the opportunity to, you are the new director, had the opportunity to look at the other states that have adopted medical and then followed up with adult use, to talk to them about the challenges that they face collecting tax from the industry because of the banking issues and it's largely a cash business? And if the rate of taxation in those states, what it has done to the legal market, how overtaxing the product can lead to the continued presence of the illicit market? That's all one big question.
One big question. So, why don't I start with cigarettes? And just some context for the budget proposal this year. I agree with you. The incentive to traffic in untaxed product in New York State is extraordinary. The, we do have one of the highest cigarette taxes in the nation. If you are in a state without a cigarette tax and you fill up a van of untaxed product and you bring it up into New York, there are tens of thousands, there's one trip, there's tens of thousands. So, that's what we're up against, right? The proposal in this year's budget is designed to help us address exactly the type of issues that you are indicating are out there, because they are. You know, one issue, for example, is someone comes in, we do an inspection, we catch them selling untaxed product, and they lose their certificate of registration, which, by the way, exists in current law. There's some tweaks to the loss of the certificate of registration, but that exists in current law. And then, we find out that there's an affiliated person who comes in and sets up and applies for a certificate of registration in the same, exact same location.
Shocking.
Right? Shocking. That's what we call shirt-changing at the department. Change their shirt, they go back out. The budget proposal has provisions that seek to address that. With respect to cannabis, critically important that we create a program, Senator Kruger and I have talked about this, critically important that we create a program that is conscious not only of the regulatory and tax burdens in other states, but also conscious of dynamics in the black market. Because we do want, over time, to absorb what is a very large and accessible and efficient black market into a regulated system.
And no one's done that yet. No state has been able to accomplish that.
Yeah, I think states have had varying levels of success. I've talked a few times with the Massachusetts Commissioner about this, and, you know, it's working over time. I don't think we can expect that it's gonna happen overnight. I think what we have to do is set up a system where we get there over time. And we are working in communication with other states to understand their experience. Particularly, there's some issues that are unique to tax administration, like, you know, cash payments, for example, that we are working to develop the best approach to.
I would just say, indulge me one second, that it would behoove you to go. You should visit California, you should visit Colorado, you should visit Nevada. It's quite an experience to see someone roll in a big bag of cash that tends to smell, too. And your tax people have to figure out how to count it and catalog it and collect it.
I've had involved conversations with the Massachusetts Commissioner about that, and we've talked about setting up a visit, and I intend to do that.
Thank you. We go to Assemblyman Bronstein.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions about the Empire State Child Tax Credit. So, the tax credit in its current form is if you have children four or older. And is there an income threshold?
It's $110,000 for a married couple.
For a married couple, for the current. Why did, when we established the program, did we stop at four?
That's a good question. I don't really know the answer to that question. I think it was a pretty long time ago. I think it was Pataki era, is my understanding. I don't quite understand what went into it. I do think, I think maybe there were some other benefits that it was argued, you know, kind of replaced the credit with respect to those, to kids in that income range, but I don't have those details.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was just trying to wonder, if the federal tax credit was different back then or?
Federal credit has always been zero to 16 or 17, whatever.
Okay, okay. All right, that was my only question.
Thank you.
Senate? Thank you. Senator Betty Little.
Thank you and welcome, Commissioner. And let me begin by saying I appreciate your accessibility through, with constituent issues and calls that we get, because we do get a lot of them, and your agency has been very good responding and helping and getting back to people.
Thank you for that. They're watching and I'm sure they appreciate it.
Yeah. I'll join my colleagues just for a minute in asking about the long-term care credit. I remember when long-term care insurance came about and we offered a credit to incentivize people to buy this insurance so they wouldn't have to hide their assets or get rid of their assets so they could go on Medicaid. Why take away this credit? Because the premiums have gotten really, really expensive to the point where you say, yeah, they had to make less than $250,000 per year. People with less income than that aren't buying these premiums. So, you're really taking away the incentive. I would hope you would reconsider. And I know that you estimate 32,000 taxpayers would be dropped, but are there some businesses who, under the personal income tax, are paying the insurance premiums for their employees, which makes it look like, you know, a huge, huge insurance premium and a lot of income?
Well, it would, the credit, to the extent that a business is using it to pay for their employees, the credit would be shared down so that it would only be, to the extent that it would apply to the individual business owner's taxes, right? Because this is a personal income tax proposal, so it's for pass-through entities, entities where the tax is passed through the individual.
So, it'd be the individual's income that you'd be looking at, not the corporate business, B I T. Okay, thank you. And under the small business tax thing, which I think is a great idea and help our small businesses, but under the corporate tax reduction, you say that the business can't have an income more than $390,000 in entire net income. But if they have $390,000 and one cent, they would lose it entirely. Whereas previously, you had a graduated threshold from 400,000 to 500,000. Is it possible to continue a graduated rate from 390,000 to 490,000?
As you note, this is a proposal really geared at restoring a measure of progressivity in the corporate income tax, because it did exist before corporate form in 2014. And it's a recognition of the importance of New York small businesses to job growth, employment. The current structure functions to really maximize the benefit that we're providing on those businesses below that threshold. Certainly, as you note, there are reasons to consider a phased-in approach or a different structure that smoothes it out. Certainly, those are conversations that we could have in the context of budget negotiations.
Okay, thank you. I know that after the Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, we decoupled New York from the federal government, which is very helpful to New Yorkers. Are we all set with that, that we don't need to make any more adjustments?
I don't think there's anything out there. As you noted, we were very aggressive in that first year in decoupling. Those decoupling reforms, as you recall, they saved New Yorkers $1.5 billion in taxes annually. And on the personal income tax side, we, I think, were very comprehensive in that initial effort. And then, we built on that to include some business-related provisions as well in the following year's budget. So, you know, we are always, you know, constantly understanding implications of the law even now.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you're doing that.
But I think it's, I think we've done a good job.
Okay. No, I'm not a fan of recreational marijuana, sitting up here, but I also wonder why we tax cigarettes and tobacco products like crazy, and yet, we're only giving the counties, there's no sales in local taxes, sales tax on marijuana proposed, and we're only going to give the counties 2% locally, whereas if it were a sales tax, they would have gotten 4% locally. It's 3% or 4% depending on the county. Is that intentional or?
The, so you're talking about the 2% share in terms of cannabis taxation?
Right.
The 2% county tax, that was the provision that was incorporated into last year's executive budget proposal as well. I think, you know, we, as I said earlier, we need to be conscious of the overall tax burden to make sure that we're pulling product into the regulated market. Of course, the right, you know, a lot of the money is going towards administration of the program, particularly in the early years, and that's state-level administration. But, you know, what the right split is between state and county, that's certainly a conversation that we could have in the context of executive budget negotiations.
Okay, well, I'm not in favor of increasing taxes, but I want to see the county get their share. Thank you very much.
Assembly. Thank you. Assemblywoman Dickens, did you have a question?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you for your testimony and your time. I want to commend you and thank you for the executive budget, including and providing the tax relief for farmers and small businesses. And it will assist the middle-income families. And also, that you implemented the zero tax, percent tax for manufacturers. However, that 0% corporate franchise tax rate excludes those manufacturers that are considered small businesses, the pass-through businesses, as they're called, in that they must pay the New York State tax prior to investing in their businesses. And that's just the reverse of what large manufacturers are able to do. 75% of the manufacturers in New York State are the small to medium size. So, this is a very negative impact and a hardship on small business. And yet, we're touting here that we're doing so much for small business. Can you tell me something about that? Is there gonna be some change in that? Is there gonna be any consideration?
Thank you for that question. The existing law includes a 0% tax for manufacturers that, as you note, are structured as C corporations. Those are entities that pay tax at the corporation level. And if they have to distribute that tax to their shareholders, their shareholders would then have to pay income tax on those distributions as well. A pass-through entity that doesn't benefit from the manufacturing tax rate as, or the 0% rate, as you described, that pass-through entity is already not paying entity-level taxes. They're paying their taxes on the flow-through as it impacts the underlying individual. So, you know, to exclude those individuals from paying tax, that means that that income goes tax-free altogether, which would actually make it unique in our system relative to current burden. So, you know, that's obviously a proposal that could be considered in the context of promoting manufacturing in the state. It's a proposal that the executive hasn't embraced thus far.
Yes, I understand at what point they pay, the pass-through manufacturers pay their taxes first, then they can make the required investments in their businesses. But this is not a, it's a kind of a misconception that the tax distributions of a pass-through are personal benefit to the pass-through owners. So, this becomes a burden on them that they shouldn't have to bear, that, by the way, is not in the larger manufacturers. So, that's my concern, in that they're being treated almost as if they are C corp manufacturers.
Yeah, again, I think there are a set of policy considerations that I believe apply to, in the C corp context, that are distinct in the pass-through context. And the other piece of it is that expanding that to pass-throughs, expanding the benefit to pass-throughs, very large fiscal implication. So, you know, that would also have to be something that would be considered in the broader context of the budget discussions.
I'm gonna ask if you would be willing to bring this up in your budget discussions because New York has, in the last few years, touted ourselves as trying to have an atmosphere that enhances and makes small manufacturers, the creation of them, to continue in New York or to come into New York, because they had left. They had left. We can stop fooling ourselves. Small manufacturers. Small manufacturers had left. There are certain areas, particularly in New York City, that are zoned for that. We have encouraged them to return. Now, when they return, they're hit with this, this, the way the taxes is done. And so I'm asking, would you be willing to consider bringing this into question in your discussions?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to take another look.
Would you be able to get back with me on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Senator Kruger.
Thank you. Hi. All right, just some follow-up on a few things. As was already referenced by you and explained, that you took the federal childcare credit and you could have gone farther for the state. You could have gone to the poorest children. And I would just urge you to say to the governor, that's the target population we really want to make sure we're providing these expanded funds for.
Just understanding your comment or question. Are you, are you referencing the, the phase-in in the federal credit whereby the lower-income people, their credit is phase-in over time?
It stops at 55,000 for single filer, for funded filers.
I see, that's returned, okay.
And if you, if you continue to go down, like the earned income tax credit does, you could potentially be doubling the amount of child credit for the poorest families with the youngest children, who I think all the data points show are exactly the kids that you said we all want to be helping because it's a win-win.
Okay.
Okay? So I'm just making a pitch to go back to the governor and say, great, we can go farther. SALT, everybody was hysterical about the SALT deduction changes, and I hear that from my colleagues now. So we now have a few years. We did implement the one program it sounds like the feds didn't throw out on us, where an employer can't set up a different system and sort of help you get your deductions. But there's only 262 businesses doing that.
262 enrolled in the first year, 311 enrolled in the second.
Okay. Have we had a chance now to see what the SALT changes versus the other federal reductions have actually done for New Yorkers? Because our friend E.J. McMahon, sitting up there behind you, told me at least a year ago, you know, it all works out in the wash, not exactly the way the governor's saying. So do we have data at this point?
We, so just from a data, from a data standpoint, where do we stand on that? Federal tax law was enacted end of 2017, took effect 2018. First filers that came in under the new federal tax law, April of 2019. Extension filers disproportionately SALT-impacted, October of 2019. So that's just a few months ago at this point. And we at the Department have a, a set of regular processes that we go through as information comes in, to refine that information, to make sure that it's, the data is quote-unquote "clean," that outliers are excluded. And we continue to get in amended returns, late-filled returns, those can have a big impact too. So we are undertaking analysis to understand the impact of SALT with that data. I think there's no question that the impact of SALT has been substantial. The, the initial estimate of the Department is that SALT would cost New York's taxpayers, considering the, the SALT cap would cost New York's taxpayers up to $15 billion every year in terms of the increase in their federal tax burdens. And that's a provision that, and now I'll say a whole bunch of things that have been said plenty, but that's a provision that has a disproportionate and negative impact on New York. It's a provision that is really a, an attack on the model of active and progressive state government, you know, states that want to invest in education, invest in healthcare, invest in infrastructure. And so, you know, the governor's been very forceful in advocating for the repeal of SALT and will continue to do so.
Okay. Was also brought up by different people, but I'm just trying to get my arms around this. So, we saw a drop in beneficiaries caused by, excuse me, so when we change this STAR, you get the check, you don't get the check, it's a credit, it's a deduction, did we see a drop in beneficiaries caused by people just not successfully understanding what they're supposed to be doing in changing exemption versus credit in past years? And how many people?
We, we don't, we don't believe so. For taxpayers, under current law, for taxpayers making below $250,000, nothing has changed, nothing has affected their exemption. They would, will continue to receive that exemption unless they opt into the credit program. And then for taxpayers between 250 and 500,000, as I described, we undertook a very, I think, comprehensive effort. We identified, we didn't do a general marketing program to try to get people in. We knew exactly the people we had to get into the program. For 85% of them, we were able to automatically enroll them. They did nothing, they just received their check. And for the remaining, we were able to send them letters, ask them to come in, register voluntarily, and most of those did. And some of those who didn't, you know, you can assume that maybe not all of them would have been eligible. So overall, I think with the, with the credit program, it's safe to say that people are still getting their benefit. We're always trying to be better about getting, you know, the administration of the program and making sure your constituents are getting their checks on time. And then on the backside of it, I do think we've had success in employing a statewide perspective to ensure the integrity of what is a statewide program.
So you answered one of my colleagues, it may be multiple colleagues, but at least one of my colleagues, about not knowing the answers of different tax credits going out at what amounts, or what different deductions being collected by X number of filers. But we passed a law that people have just been calling the, the database of deals. That's not the official title of the law. And ESDC explained that they are taking till the end of this year to develop this database. They're contracting with someone. It seems to me, since so much of our economic development activity is via tax credits and exemptions, your office is the one who would know or should know. Are they working with you to coordinate so that they're building a database that will actually be able to draw down on this information from their own records and your records at the same time?
But to the extent that ESDC is putting together a database of deals for their programs, the, the only way there would be a disconnect between what they have and what we have with respect to tax programs, they have plenty of non-tax programs as well, but the only way there would be a disconnect between what they have and what we have is if a taxpayer didn't come in and claim the credit, if in fact the benefit didn't go out. Aside from that, everything ESDC does, the benefit goes to the taxpayer, and then we, we administer that benefit. And then, as you well know, we, there's a tax expenditure report that is made public every year as well.
So, I'll just use one example, because I asked ESDC earlier today about the opportunity zones program and what role the state was playing, and they said nothing. So I said, you know, what's going on in our opportunity zones? You identified them and mapped them, but then they said they have no role. But then someone else testified later, reminding me that there is a, a state and local capital gains tax benefit for businesses in opportunity zones. So you should be able to identify how many people are drawing down on the capital gains deductions for doing business in opportunity zones?
I think so, but I'm pausing because the nature of the state exclusion property, opportunity zones is a function of the fact that as a baseline, our personal income tax is tied to the federal personal income tax, which is why we had to do all that decoupling after the TCJA was enacted. So the, the reason that the opportunity zones tax benefit flows through to state law is, you know, we didn't do anything to make that happen. That is just a function of the fact that our law is tied. So the reason I say I'm not sure is that I'm not sure how the reporting on the federal returns flows through to the reporting on the state returns. I would expect that the relevant federal forms would also be attached to state forms, but I, I'm not 100% sure on that. And I'd be happy, obviously, to get back to you on that.
And you and I have had a conversation about why I think it's so important for us to get a better handle on how we evaluate tax expenditures and credits. So yes, you put out this report, and it shows certain numbers, and they grow over year, but there's not necessarily any basis for believing that these are, you know, good or bad projections. While hopefully in the 21st century, there is a better way to evaluate what the impact is, because we're talking, I don't know, I haven't added up. I used to go through and add up every tax expenditure category, and it would be like a $26 billion. It's probably like a $32 billion by now. But those numbers are important for us to understand and be able to analyze together. So my time is up. So I hope that you will continue to work on that issue as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a few questions that haven't yet been really, mostly follow-ups to other members, just in terms of what Senator Kruger's just asking in terms of SALT. Have we seen a decrease in the number of high-income taxpayers since the federal law was passed? Or is that still some of the data you're trying to collect?
That's, that's some of the, that's some of the data we're, we're working to collect and refine, that ultimately in summary reform will, will be made public. But, you know, we're, we're going through a process of, of cleaning the, the data with respect to last year's filers right now.
Okay. And then to follow up some of the conversa, the back and forth you had with Assemblywoman Galip regarding the delinquent, denying STAR benefit to delinquent property owners, and we've spoken about this previously, do we have any idea how many STAR benefits are being provided to delinquent property taxpayers? Do we have concern that denying homeowners' STAR exemptions would increase the size of tax delinquencies and lead to an increase in number of foreclosures, and particularly the impact this could have on seniors who have entered into reverse mortgage agreements?
With respect to your first question, which is, what is the scale of this problem? Part of the challenge right now is that we don't have a statewide view into property tax delinquency. So as I was mentioning to Assemblymember Galip, part of the, what this proposal would do was create that information flow between local governments and the state government on the issue of who's delinquent on their property taxes. And that will help us understand exactly what the scale of the, of the issue is. I think the overall thrust of the proposal is to protect the integrity of the STAR program, to decrease delinquencies, right, to help local governments who have really limited tools when it comes to collecting property taxes. Their only recourse is foreclosure. So really, it's better for, for everyone if people are staying current on their property taxes. So to really increase compliance, voluntary compliance with property tax obligations, while also including a set of safeguards for affected taxpayers. And in the case of this legislation, those safeguards include notice of the fact that they might lose their STAR benefit, an opportunity to protest the fact that we think, you know, maybe we have our facts wrong, you know, they should be able to come in and provide information, and then an opportunity to cure before their benefits are reduced. And so, you know, there, I think there is a sense of balance in the legislation with respect to the imperative of getting people to comply with their tax, property tax obligations, while also building in a set of safeguards.
Seems like a lot of work without knowing, you know, sort of to react to a couple of publicized cases, but we'll continue and have those discussions as we go on. And Senator Little had asked some questions about the small business tax. Do we know how many, is there an estimate of how many small businesses would benefit from the proposal? I know there's a dollar figure attached to it, but is?
The, the, the proposal to reduce the corporation tax from 6.5% to 4%, that would benefit 36,000 small businesses.
Thank you. And then I have two more subjects. So on the film production tax credit, what's the rationale for the 5% reduction on that and the limitation, the dollar limits? I don't know if you were, I think you might have been in the room, not sure if you were in the room when we heard from some folks in economic development, hearing, talking about the need to, that we'd be better off increasing the, those thresholds, the dollar, the 1 million to go up to 1.5, and the, the add in New York City to go up to a million to try and get larger budget productions into the state?
Again, this is a, a program where we, in terms of the, the day-to-day administration, the Tax Department does not have a significant role. It's ESDC's Film Office that is engaging with the industry on a day-to-day basis, and that is certifying the availability of, of the credit. It is an important credit, obviously, for the industry in New York. It does, has done a lot to fuel the growth of content creation here in the state. And the changes in this year's budget, because it's been used so, so extensively, I think the changes in this year's budget help to ensure that the resources are going to be available to the long term so it can continue to have that impact.
And also, what I've heard and was mentioned here today is that just the one-year extension doesn't help that much because productions, if they're wanting to start a new production, need to know that they, they have a few years that they can keep that production going and not have to wonder whether the state is going to renew the, the credit for future years. So I, I know over the years that has, when this has come up, that's been an issue. So I would just suggest that we think about having a longer extension. And then one of my colleagues had, several colleagues actually, had raised an issue about the mortgage recording tax and how it could be avoided when the borrower, borrower of a large project doesn't seek funds from a bank, but instead from sources of private equity, mezzanine financing, as it's called. And that we're seeing the private equity funding, real estate sales are less expensive because of being able to avoid the mortgage recording tax, and they don't have concerns about what the mortgage is collateralized by, so they don't need to have, they don't have the need for, to have that recorded. Obviously, in a big money purchase, it could be a substantial amount of money. I don't know if you've given any thought to that, but could you give some thought to, if there is some reasonable way for New York State to prevent purchases of expensive real estate from avoiding the mortgage recording tax and the, then the tremendous loss of revenue to the state?
We'd be happy to take a look at that.
Okay. Thank, thank you. That is all the questions I have and all the questions the members have. We look forward to hearing from you, Commissioner, on some of the issues that you'll get back to us on, and looking for the information on particular, your findings on the impact of SALT on the personal income taxes of, of New York residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. So now we have the non-government portion, the public portion of our hearing. Just a reminder, for the witnesses, we have your testimonies, or we should have had your testimonies sent to us electronically in advance. Those who have complied with our regulations, our rules, that testimony has been circulated to the members. The witnesses will have five minutes to present their testimony. Don't read it, because you never get to your important parts, which are at the end. You don't have to thank us for being here. You don't have to say other things about how you've worked with us over the years. Just get to your, your high points. We know you appreciate being here. And for the members that want to ask questions, there's a three-minute time, and that's both for the question and answer. So it's basically for a question or two. And with that, Ed McMahon.
You just have to add, you don't even have to like us.
You don't have to like us. We could disagree. We could agree to disagree. And with that, the Empire Center for Public Power. And with that, the Empire Center for Public Policy, you just happened to be first.
Good afternoon. With every sincere formality in mind, but leaving unexpressed, I'll go right into it. Among this very little tax action in the budget this year, as you know, among the very few proposals the governor has made without belittling any others, I'm going to focus on two and then pivot to discussing other proposals that you're hearing a lot about that I think are very relevant. The two proposals I'm going to discuss are the governor's proposal to expand the child credit and, for Assemblywoman Bronstein's knowledge, it did not go below five years old because it was originally proposed as a tuition tax credit by Governor Pataki. And the Assembly Speaker at the time insisted on converting it ages to a credit for school-aged children. It was for school-aged children, that's why. I think the governor's proposal is a very laudable one, but you should go further in repeating a proposal I've made in the past that's detailed in here. I think you should cancel, repeal the small sales tax exemption on clothing and footwear purchases and use the very large sum of money that goes for that into very meaningful added child credit relief, which would help working families a lot more. You could pretty much double the child credit and do the governor's piece for the money that's spent on that. The second piece of the budget, a tax item in the budget, which I am negative on, is the extension of the film credit. And I'll just pass over that and just say, I think it's a bad idea. I think the film credit is something on which you should call a rap as soon as possible, and I'll be happy to discuss it or explain my viewpoint beyond what's in my testimony if you'd like me to. And from there, I would move on to turn to some other proposals on the tax front. As you know, various groups have proposed various proposals, including new taxes on stock buybacks, a tax on accumulated wealth, a so-called piéter terre tax on high-priced second homes, all in the name of taxing, quote-unquote, millionaires and billionaires. The most relevant proposal, relevant because it's been passed by the Assembly in one-house budgets for several years now, is a proposal to add to the tax rate on people who make more than a million dollars a year. As I explained in my testimony, we've already seen effects from before the SALT cap, I think, of higher taxes on New Yorkers. I think we're seeing erosion in the resident part of the tax base and significant growth among non-resident high-income earners. The tax cap is extremely significant and really brings a sea change in taxation in New York. What used to be nearly a 40% discount on New York State's top rate, on the combined New York City and state top rate, is now gone. You now pay 100% of the tax. That means, and this helps clear up one misunderstanding, in the Rockefeller era when the tax went as high as 15.4%, that 15.4% tax was fully deductible and cost the people who paid it 4.5%. Most recently, the 8.9%, 8.8% state tax rate cost the people who paid it 6.3%, including a minor, a lesser cap on deductibility was already in federal law. The cap's now gone. It has significantly increased the net cost of our marginal tax rate to a degree never seen before. It's much higher than it's ever been, both in the state level and combined state and city. That's a factor that needs to be considered in light of all of these proposals. I would also suggest that if you look at issues that affect high-income payers, the income tax is not the only one. You did a very good reform of the estate tax five or six years ago, but we still remain one of only a dozen states that still have any estate tax. It's basically the Upper Midwest, New England, and us, and the rest of the country, not just Florida, not just the no-tax places. Nowhere is there an estate tax. That's something of which people with large estates are very aware. Let me turn to a final issue. We can all, we can agree to disagree on what the proper levels of spending are. People believe in bigger government or smaller government, or more of one thing or more of another. But one rule I think you would want to be conscious of is that you need a tax base that's sustainable. If your tax base is not sustainable and reliable, at whatever level you're choosing to spend, you're going to run into serious fiscal problems and endanger your programs. The Assembly of Ways and Means Staff several years ago noted that because we're so heavily dependent, that was then, before some of the most recent increases, that our income tax is inherently unstable, volatile, and unsustainable. That was what the Ways and Means Staff pointed out a good 10 years or so ago. It's become more so since then. And it would be even more or less sustainable in the long run, more volatile, more unreliable, if, aside from all the other objections, you were to go to further increase your already steep marginal rates on very high earners. So, that's a final closing reason for not going ahead and doing that. And I have now gone three and a half seconds past my allotted time, and I'll close it there and gladly answer any questions.
Assemblyman Roth.
Good afternoon. If you can talk a little bit more about the film tax credit, you know, a number of members of our conference have criticized this credit in the past and, you know, have felt that a lot of it goes to productions that would have taken place here anyway. Do you feel that any of the reforms to it have gotten at that issue?
Well, no. I mean, the main argument made for the film credit as well is, and so-called impact analysis of it says that, is to simply tally up all of the productions made that qualified for the credit and say that they have, that the credit is responsible for all the jobs that they produced. I would suggest to you that if you gave any industry, let's say all of manufacturing, or just chemicals, or just metal benders, a 30% production credit, as a subsidy that is, send them a check annually for 30% of what they produce, you'd see a lot more of it. It's that simple. This industry has certain obvious appeal to people that gives it, that gets it some special treatment. This was a major production site before the credit went into effect. It will remain a major production site after it's gone. You will not have as many productions, but you have to think about cost benefits. And at what point do you stop subsidizing and let New York compete on its own merits? I would, for instance, it can be reasonably argued that with heavy, very heavy subsidies from state taxpayers, the state film credit was responsible for incentivizing the construction and expansion of major studio facilities in New York City, with which many of us are familiar. The credit is one of the reasons for that, because so much was being subsidized there. If I could sum up simplistically my reaction now, can we stop now? When is enough enough? That's the question I would ask about it. There was studies done on this recently by a professor at USC who's done some criticism of this also, who suggested that the impact is minimal in the five states with the highest credit. So, as you can see, I'm tempted to go on at length about it because I really think it's very difficult to defend at this point.
Thank you very much, and I thank you for your work. I do enjoy reading your publications about different issues going on in New York State.
Thank you.
Brian Benjamin.
Thank you. So, I want to jump right into philosophy for a second.
Right.
So, one of the things you reference here is that roughly 40% of the income tax is paid by the highest earning 1% of taxpayers.
Right.
I'm assuming you're saying that because you're making up the claim possibly that the top 1% is paying too much, is 40% too much?
They're paying what they pay. That's meant to be an answer to the claim that our taxes are not fair. And fair is a subjective. We could disagree all day about fair. I think that quite often, at this point, fair means more rather than appropriate.
Since we got time limits, what do you define as fair? What is fair to you?
I think, though, you want a tax code that raises, that maximizes all the revenue you need and only the revenue you need, and that what revenue you need is decided by what you spend. But that you're probably a little bit beyond the point now where you are actually maximizing revenue, that there's some signs of already of leakage in our tax base before the tax cap, some of which is demographic and unavoidable because the wealthiest New Yorkers are baby boomers in general who are all turning into retirement age, and are, many of whom might be selling out businesses and moving to other states anyway. So, I think, what is the right level? I would say, I would back up and say, the level is a level that is competitive, that allows you to retain the economic base you have in all of its diversity without unduly creating undue incentives to think harder about doing what they do elsewhere. And I think that's a risk. And again, volatility is a concern. Quite apart from what you think is fair, you've got a very volatile tax base right now, more volatile than at any time in modern history because we have increased our reliance on a very small number of high-income taxpayers to its highest level ever, and we're more dependent on our income tax than we've ever been. It's 2/3 of our tax revenue now.
Got it. So, raising, one of your sentences here, raising taxes on the highest incomes to raise revenues in the short term will only accelerate the erosion of our tax base in the long run.
Yes.
Do you have some historical context for that, or is that just your opinion?
Well, first of all, I mentioned some figures in my testimony that I think indicate and suggest that you already have begun to see some erosion, number one. Number two, if you wanted to...
Right, but that erosion was, from what I remember seeing, not millionaires and billionaires, or from people who were making a lot less than that.
No, I was talking about the tax base of millionaire earners. I said that our, the number of millionaire earners in New York State increased more slowly than in the rest of the country during the period from the recession.
Right, but increasing more...
Through 2016, the latest year for which we have data, there was a very, very striking difference in the growth in incomes among income millionaires during that period. It was much, much slower here, in fact, mainly in the non-investment category, income category, by the way, and a strikingly large increase in the federal gross incomes of non-residents who are in our tax base. Now, I can't, the data don't say those people are all people who left New York. They weren't, they were not all people who were once in New York and moved elsewhere. But those things all tend to at least be, should be seen as gestures in the direction of not supporting the idea that you can raise taxes with impunity and that no one responds to higher tax rates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assembly.
Senate, again, we have no more questions.
Senator Betty Little.
Thank you. It used to be the estate tax that took people from the North Country definitely to states where they had better estate tax benefits. But now, I think what you're saying, and that tax the rich, the millionaire tax, continue to do that, there is a definite connection, isn't there, between that and people moving in other states as well? Do they move out of other states as much as they're moving out of New York State if you get into the high taxing?
I would say that, keep in mind that the number of people, residents of New York State who earn a million dollars or more is about 45,000 people, I think, remembering offhand. Maybe it's lower, I can't, maybe 45,000 households. That's a very, very small number of people. All of the statistics that the Census Bureau does about migration count hundreds of thousands of people moving, most of whom, by definition, are not.
Millionaires.
They're not only not millionaires, they're not even affluent, okay? But the question is, what do we see in the numbers that suggests that that small group in particular is becoming more mobile? I cite a statistic that's very interesting from the latest IRS migration data, which is from tax returns. If you look at people moving to Florida from Manhattan, only Manhattan, their average incomes of the people moving from Manhattan to Florida grew from $125,000 roughly in 2011, '12, to $245,000 in the space of seven years. Now, when you have an average that high for like 3,300 people, probably the distribution is weighted at some ends by some really high income. In fact, some of the counties in Florida during that period were gaining New York Manhattan residents with incomes averaging over $900,000, small numbers of people. But the small number of high-income earners in New York, especially super-high, pay so much more per tax, per filer, that you, a very small number of them actually can and will be missed if you have more of them move away. And they don't just have to move away, they can do things to minimize their income. They can choose to earn less or defer. They can choose to be in New York less of the time. There's all sorts of techniques and tactics that can be used to at least try to minimize one's presence and exposure to New York taxes. And I think they're, what we're seeing are signs that that's going on.
How about the governor's small business tax proposal, reducing the tax on corporate, corporate taxes on small business? Do you have an opinion on that?
My opinion on that is it looks fine as far as it goes. It doesn't go very far. It looked like a way to do the least bit possible and say one was proposing a small business tax cut. Now, in the overall context of the budget, is a much broader small business tax cut a higher priority than other things? I don't, I don't know. I haven't looked at what the difference would be, but there's very few small businesses relatively that pay, that are C corps, as the commissioner and others have been saying, I think. And this is, 36,000 or 39,000 small businesses is not many businesses.
I'm going to have to cut this off.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will follow up with you at another time. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all the questions we have at this time. Next, we will have a panel. Fiscal Policy Institute Ronald Deutsch joining, Mr. Deutsch is Mr. Jason...
Jonas.
Jonas, okay. I can't read the, the New York State Council of Churches, Reverend Peter Cook, and Skyler Center for Analysis and Advocacy, Dorothy Hill. Just as a reminder, Fiscal Policy Institute, you have five minutes, even though there are two of you, you figure that out. Each of the other Council Churches and Skyler Center, you each have five minutes. After that, there'll be opportunity for members to ask questions.
Wait, so you said five minutes? So, we have the clock at three. Do you want to do five?
Yeah, it's five.
Five minutes.
Tom? Yeah, five for each group.
Right. I'd say, I'd suggest next year, if you're going to group folks together, you should put EJ and I together. It'd be more entertaining.
We thought of that, but we wanted the hearing to end earlier.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you all today. We greatly appreciate that. I want to jump right in, obviously, since I only have two and a half minutes, and I'm splitting that with my colleague here. We indeed believe there is a spending problem in New York, and that spending problem is this, a 2% state spending cap. For the last 10 years, we've been operating under this cap. This cap is not in statute, it's not in law, we don't have to adhere to it, yet you all agree to it every year. The governor puts out his budget, he's got spending set at 1.9% this year. That doesn't give you all much wiggle room, and it really doesn't give you the opportunity to fund the things that need to be funded. This cap has been a detriment to human services, right? When you have budget outlays for education and healthcare, that could be anywhere from 4% to 6% increases per year, and they represent half of our budget outlays, that means everything else under a 2% cap overall has to go down. And what we've been seeing clearly is that state human service funding to localities, if it had grown at the same rate as the overall budget for the last 10 years since 2011, we would actually be spending about $2.2 billion more this year than we are to address many of the human services needs that exist here in New York State. So, I would suggest we do have this spending problem and we need to correct it. We can no longer continue to operate under this, these austerity measures and this scarcity mindset. So, we need to raise revenue. There is a poll that was released on Monday, perhaps you heard about it. It was from the Heart Research Polling Institute, and it looked at three particular revenue raisers. It looked at, pardon my French, the piéter terre tax, it looked at the ultra-millionaire's tax, and it looked at taxing billionaires' wealth. And what did it find? 90% of New Yorkers supported these measures, over 90% in some cases, supported these measures. 90-plus percent thought that doing all three of these things would be the right thing to do for New York. And for those of you who are afraid about raising taxes on the wealthy right now and have been reluctant to do so, the poll indicated that 72% of New Yorkers would be more likely to vote for you if you, in fact, voted for these measures. So, I would say we have, we have a spending problem that we're not spending enough, and revenues need to be raised. So, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Jonas Shinda, to talk about those three measures.
The three measures, thank you for having us here. The three measures that we support, the institute, are, first is taxing the true economic income of the wealthiest New Yorkers, where they would not be able to time their gains and losses and their taxation by trying to sell at the opportune times their financial, their financial assets. By doing that, would be able to make our tax system a lot more fair. The second, second, is the piéter terre tax. The piéter terre tax, we discussed last year, and it was an overwhelming support for that tax. It would generate, in our estimation, about half a billion dollars per annum. So, that is a tax on expensive, $5 million and more properties where people do not live. So, there's a second and third homes that are luxurious and not very needed to those who own them. And the third is the multimillionaire tax that, in the new version that we have, would generate about four and a half billion dollars of... the new version that we have, would, would generate about $4.5 billion of brand-new revenue. Now, the millionaire tax that we are proposing would, would have the brackets at $1 million, $5 million, $10 million, and $100 million, with the, with the rates at 9.62%, 10.32%, 11.32%, and 11.82%, respectively. That is quite reasonable, well below California and other comparable tax high, high-tax states. And so we think that is a very important thing to consider. With respect to the millionaires leaving the state, since the first implementation of the millionaire tax, their numbers increased by 89%, and their total incomes more than doubled. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cook.
Thank you for the opportunity to, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the New York State Council of Churches in our quest to raise more revenue from the rich and to lift the 2% spending cap. I think as a pastor, representing so many pastors in every part of the state, in rural communities, and suburban communities, and urban communities, downstate and upstate, we encounter so many people who are dealing with a tremendous financial strain because the costs of childcare, high deductible health plans, housing, food, and other expenses often exceed their modest incomes. We add to this problem underfunded schools, poor rural broadband service, crumbling roads and bridges, closing hospitals, and a property tax rate which causes many New Yorkers to live in poverty or lose their homes or their businesses. When complaints mount, the state responds by telling people that there's not much they can do because we have a budget deficit which can only be solved by, in this case, this year, cutting Medicaid and other programs and shifting state responsibility on to overburdened counties and municipalities. We also say there's no new money to invest in programs which would lift the financial burdens of the vast majority of people. And we respectfully disagree with these assertions and assumptions. And we really believe that we need to lift the cap and to tax the very wealthiest.
Thank you.
We, along with Fiscal Policy Institute and many other groups, have made 14 proposals to raise revenue from the very wealthiest without taxing most New Yorkers. There are two common arguments in favor of not taxing rich people, which we wish to debunk. First, the rich people will leave the state if we tax them more. While there are studies to suggest that a handful may leave if their taxes go up, the truth is that most will stay because New York allows them to make more money, and this is the place that they call home. It's also the case that many disproportionately benefited from the 217 federal tax cut, which means that they are paying less taxes than they did several years ago. A far greater problem, we think, are the number of lower and middle-class New Yorkers leaving New York because their taxes and cost burdens are too high. Massive loss in federal revenue could be happening after we conduct a census which shows a loss in population. The other argument is that it's politically unfeasible to tax rich people because politicians who make this case now could stand to not be elected again if they push on this agenda. Wait, we are told, until after 2021, when we can see if the Democrats again can get the majority. The truth is that too many New Yorkers cannot bear this economic burden, waiting to see if this somewhat dubious political theory comes to pass. As Ron Deutsch noted, there are studies that suggest that there is wide support for taxing the very wealthiest. So finally, we just wish to stress that the faith community does care a lot for people in our state, in every part of our state. We are at the front lines of caring for the poor and the disenfranchised. And in our caring, we are guided by the principle of loving our neighbors and living into the promise of God's abundance. We resist narratives of austerity, and we're doing our part. And now, we need the state of New York to do their part. Raise revenue at the top and lift the 2% spending cap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm DeeDee Hill from the Skyler Center. Thank you for this opportunity. We are thrilled about the proposal in the executive budget to expand the Empire State Child Credit. I don't get to say that a lot, that I am thrilled about a proposal that is targeted at young children. But we, we have it in this executive budget. And so I just, I want to lift that up and also wanna, many in this room have heard us talk about this for many years, about how it has, it makes no sense that our current child tax credit that is intended to offset the high cost of raising children omits young children. And it particularly makes no sense, given what we know now, what all the literature tells us, about young children, when their brains are developing, they are at, they're the most vulnerable to the impacts of poverty. And what we also know is that investing in young children is really good public policy. These investments, the return on investment, when you direct resources to young children, they endure for a lifetime. So, so again, we, we applaud the proposal to expand the child tax credit to include young children under the age of four. But we would also suggest that we have an opportunity, because, because this proposal is in the executive budget, to do this right. And so, and I would echo what Senator Krueger suggested earlier, or was asking about earlier. One, one group of children that is omitted, even under the proposed expansion of the credit, are our children who live in deep poverty. And 9% of New York children live in deep poverty. And what that is, is they're living at half of the federal poverty level. And the, the way that the tax credit is currently structured is it, it doesn't begin to phase in, it doesn't even start, well, it, it starts, but at a minimum, at $3,000, and then it phases in slowly. And so what we would propose is let's drop in the credit at $1, and, and at that, and, and drop it in at the highest credit, so that we are directing the most resources to the families who need it the most. In addition, let's make the young child tax credit equitable with the credit as it exists for older children. Under the governor's proposal, he caps the credit for young children at $50,000 of earnings, whereas for older children, it phases out gradually at $75,000 or $110,000 for joint filers. It should be equitable. We shouldn't be still maintaining a subclass of young children in our child tax credit. And, and finally, we know that tax credits, when they, child tax credits, when they are robust, can be among the most effective ways to, to reduce child poverty. Child poverty in New York State has, has persisted, even as we've increased the minimum wage, even as our unemployment is at record lows. Our families cannot pull themselves out of poverty, no matter how hard they work. And so let's make our child tax credit really robust. Let's increase it to $1,000 for young children, $500 for older children. This will really move the dial on child poverty. I'd also like to speak briefly about another exciting proposal in the executive budget, and this is around the Earned Income Tax Credit. It would allow for the automatic issuance of the Earned Income Tax Credit to tax filers if they fail to claim it and are eligible. This is a great step. However, let's also use this opportunity to strengthen the Earned Income Tax Credit, and let's expand it to include young adults. Currently, young childless adults 17 to 24, who experience poverty at much higher rates than other adults, are excluded from the Earned Income Tax Credit. They are, in fact, taxed into poverty. And so let's change that, and let's make them eligible for the Earned Income Tax Credit. Let's help them get a foothold in the workforce when they're starting out, and help to make work pay. I'm going to leave it there, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank, thank you. You are, all were very thorough, as well as the accompanying material testimonies, which we've read in advance. So we thank you very much for being here, and there are no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Kink, Strong Economy for All Coalition, and Charles Khan. He'll be, they'll be followed by Rock Normal, to be followed by National Federation of Independent Business.
Good afternoon. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be able to speak in front of you. I just want to touch on a couple of points. I think if you read our testimony, all 14 options that EJ McMahon was talking about, that would tax the ultra-wealthy to the benefit of everyone else in New York State are included. And a couple of, I just want to kind of talk about the status of what New York looks like right now. We have corporate profits across the country and in New York at an all-time high. The number of billionaires, 112, higher than it's ever been, with a higher net wealth than it has ever been, $525 billion. We've seen the number of millionaires almost double in the past decade. And what we've seen on the other end is the number of homeless New Yorkers at 92,000 officially. But we know that the unofficial numbers are much higher. We see that, in addition to record homelessness, there are record levels of child poverty. There are record numbers of New Yorkers that are paying over 50% of their income in housing, if they can afford housing at all. We are seeing folks pay property tax that need relief, middle-income families, working-class families. And, and really what we're seeing is that while a small number of New Yorkers are swimming in more wealth than they have ever had, the rest of New York is drowning, drowning in rent, drowning in property taxes, drowning in, in higher costs. And if we do not take any action, and we follow the governor's proposals to cut Medicaid, which would be cutting healthcare for the poorest New Yorkers, and pushing costs to local governments, that we are gonna make that situation much, much worse. Local governments are already hamstrung by the property tax cap. If we push almost $2 billion of costs onto them, they will have no choice but to cut their local services and push even more costs onto poor New Yorkers. We're seeing that the state is shrinking, but we know that the number of wealthy New Yorkers is growing. And as EJ McMahon said, you know, the people that he has data on that are leaving New York, they are not millionaires. They are not the people we are talking about taxing. We know that the folks that are leaving New York are working class, middle class, some upper-middle class, and poor New Yorkers. That is who we're losing. That is who we're leaving behind. The numbers at the top are growing at rates we've never seen. And at the bottom, we're losing, you know, the, the fabric of New York.
I was gonna talk just briefly on three of the specific points that we've included in our testimony, the billionaire wealth tax, the stock buyback transfer tax, and the digital services or data tax. As Charles mentioned, we've got 112 billionaires living in New York with $525 billion worth of wealth. Their wealth and income has exploded over the last decade, as everyone else's has stagnated or gone backwards. New York is a world center of billionaires. As I always do in our testimony, I included a number of specific studies from WealthX and the Knight Frank Wealth Report, demonstrating that New York's status as a global center of finance and billionaires is not diminishing. It's getting even stronger. We're proposing a modest state tax on unrealized capital gains, a mark-to-market tax, that's very similar to the proposals that Senator Ron Wyden and former Vice President Joe Biden have proposed at the federal level. We'd assess the value of unrealized capital gains for these 112 residents every year, and ask them to pay a modest percentage of the explosive gains that they make in wealth, to pay for the schools and the subways, and maybe some housing for homeless New Yorkers. The data tax is a tax on the platforms whose products are free to the public. You buy, pay a sales tax on a cup of coffee or a load of lumber, but Facebook does not pay a sales tax when they sell $100 million worth of digital advertising to a company or a political candidate. Finally, the corporate stock buyback transfer tax is not the whole stock transfer tax, not the $13 billion that we rebate every year to Wall Street, but just a sales tax on that portion of stock trading where it's companies buying back their own shares. It used to be illegal until 1982. Right now, they're mainly used where there are huge job cuts and a transfer of corporate resources to hedge funds and other short-term investors. Just stock buybacks would raise 3.2 billion a year.
Thank you for your testimony today, as well as the document that you had previously emailed and that you brought with you today, that we, many of us have already looked at. Thank you again for being here. I'm sure we'll continue to have discussions, interactions as the budget goes, negotiations go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rock Normal, to be followed, as I mentioned, National Federation Independent Business. This, if, can work your way down. And then we will have a panel with Indivisible Harlem and Elizabeth Felizia. Thank you.
Thank you to the members of both chambers for having me here today. My name is Steve Van Dool, and I'm an economic policy advisor at Rock Normal. We are the Rochester Chapter for the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. New York is en route to becoming the 12th state to legalize cannabis for adult use, meaning we have 11 other states to look at as case studies. We have an opportunity to look at what's worked and what hasn't, and use real data to shape smart cannabis policy in New York. And what the data continues to tell us over and over is that tax structure implementation is foundational to industry success. And industry success directly correlates with increased tax revenue. If taxes on the supply chain are too high, these costs get passed on to the consumer in the form of high prices. Let's look at two examples, and all this data is in the handout that I've given to you. California has an effective tax rate in excess of 40%, a population of roughly 31 million people aged 21-plus. And in 2018, they earned an estimated $236 million in revenue, tax revenue, from adult-use cannabis sales, meaning their per capita revenue was $7.63 per person. Colorado, on the other hand, has an effective tax rate of nearly 30%, a population of roughly 3 million adults aged 21-plus. And in 2018, they earned an estimated $267 million in tax revenue from adult-use sales, meaning their per capita revenue was $88 per person. So let's wrap our heads around that for a second. So let's wrap our heads around that for a second. Colorado has 1/10th of the adult population as California. Colorado generated roughly $30 million more in tax revenue than California. Colorado made 8.7 times more money per person than California, and Colorado's taxes were nearly 10% lower than California. So how is this even possible? Well, Section 280E of the U.S. Internal Revenue Code law prohibits traffickers of controlled substances, i.e. all legal cannabis businesses, from deducting all business expenses except cost of goods sold. An excise tax paid by cultivators, which is currently slated at 15% in New York, that would otherwise be a deductible business expense, becomes non-deductible by virtue of 280E, ultimately increasing downstream retail prices in an attempt to obtain what little margin still exists. Retail prices become unaffordable, forcing consumers back into the less expensive, unregulated market. And while I understand that there are members of this body who would vote against adult-use legalization, I think we can all agree on the fact that there is currently a thriving, unregulated market in our state, and it would be in everybody's best interest to mitigate it. The unregulated market does not collect tax revenue, nor does it have quality or safety standards, and being in the middle of a vape crisis, we must do every, excuse me, and being in the middle of a vape crisis, which the CDC has confirmed to be caused in large part by illicitly made cannabis products, we must do everything we can to shrink this market and protect the health and safety of consumers. Now, all this data that we have from the 11 states have legalized already, which, again, is in the handout I've given to all of you, and what we know about the relationship between high supply chain taxes and the effects it has on the rise and fall of the illicit and regulated markets respectively, why in the world is New York slated for a highest in the nation effective tax rate of 46%? Especially when one of the goals of this legislation is to create an industry framework that is equitable and diverse, and supports small craft businesses. New York's flourishing craft beer industry has created the equivalent of approximately 20 full-time jobs, and produces $3.4 billion in economic output annually, and according to a 2019 report by the Rockefeller Institute, the adult-use cannabis industry will surpass these numbers if and only if an appropriate industry is implemented. Long story short, high taxes lead to high prices, which leads to a rise in the nontaxable, unsafe, unregulated market. New York truly has the opportunity to implement gold standard cannabis policy, which, if done correctly, will be used as a model for other states that have yet to legalize. Thank you again for having me today, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you for being here. At the moment, there are no questions. We have your submission also. I'm sure there'll be discussions as we continue along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have National Federation of Independent Business, Greg Barilla. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As mentioned, my name is Greg Barilla. I'm the New York State Director for NFIB, also known as the National Federation of Independent Business. We are the nation's and the state's leading small business advocacy association. NFIB is a member-driven organization representing hundreds of thousands of small businesses across the country, and 11,000 right here in New York State. NFIB members define our neighborhoods, fill our communities with character, create local jobs, and homegrown economic opportunity. And I do want to stress that, homegrown economic opportunity. If you talk to anybody in business, they will tell you it's much cheaper and easier to keep a customer that you already have than to get a new one. We spend a lot of time trying to attract new businesses to this state. We need to spend a little more time paying attention to the ones that we have that are already creating jobs. Small businesses employ nearly half the state's workforce, 4 million New Yorkers. I trust you all recognize and value the importance of small business in your home districts. It's also important to keep businesses in mind when considering the wide-ranging impacts set forth during this budget process. New York's reputation as a high-tax, difficult-to-do-business state is well-established and has been talked about at length here today. That being said, New York State has taken some positive steps in recent years, including making the property tax cap permanent last year. What has been absent is targeted tax relief for New York's small, independent, local businesses, and that is exactly what I wanted to discuss today. In his budget, the governor advanced a welcome small business tax relief proposal that will benefit approximately 36,000 small businesses. The governor's proposal achieves this by reducing the corporate tax rate from 6.5% to 4% for small businesses employing less than 100 workers and reporting less than $390,000 in business income. The governor's proposal also expands the income exemption to 15% for small farms and sole proprietors earning less than $250,000. I want to be clear, NFIB, our members and membership organizations like ours, supports the governor's proposal. It will help thousands of small businesses organized as C-corpse, sole props, and small farms. Many types of businesses are organized as such. Generally speaking, however, most businesses are organized as entities whose tax passes through the business and is paid as the owner's personal income tax. Some of these pass-throughs are organized as sole proprietors, but most are constructed as LLCs, partnerships, and S-corpse. They do not pay a corporate franchise tax and will not qualify for the expanded income exemption. Today, I want to ask the panel in both houses of the legislature to build upon the governor's initiative and support a bipartisan-backed solution to achieve broader tax relief for additional small businesses trying to grow and hire in New York. The proposal I speak of already exists and mirrors the executive proposal in many ways, S-5954 and A/A6309, sponsored by Senator Anna Kaplan and Assemblyman Rahm and Chivinger. This legislation includes the governor's proposal to reduce the corporate tax rate, but extends that 15% income exemption to all types of pass-through small businesses, not just sole props and small farms. Last month, 34 organizations, including statewide advocacy groups like NFIB, regional community chambers of commerce and trade groups, wrote legislative leaders to announce their strong support for the governor's proposal and a broader approach to tax relief that will support the entire spectrum of small businesses and encourage community-driven economic growth and opportunity. That letter is included with the testimony I submitted today. Also today, this year, we have an opportunity to provide some modest relief on the other side of the balance sheet for small businesses who pay, as discussed, extremely high taxes, high workers' compensation insurance cost, high unemployment insurance cost, a regulatory environment in New York that can be stifling. We have an opportunity to provide some relief on the other side for truly small businesses. There is a big difference between Main Street and Wall Street. There is a big difference between small biz and big box. It's time that our tax code and the way it treats small businesses and employers recognizes those differences. 67 cents of every dollar spent in a small business stays within the local economy. Small businesses' profits and wages stay local, and small businesses spend resources in their community, spend resources in their community. I think these are things that we can all support and get behind. I'll close my comments and answer any questions that the panel may have.
Thank you. Assemblyman Rah has a quick question.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Assemblyman.
So, I mean, you know, your letter obviously shows a broad base of support for doing that more expanded proposal that is, you know, referencing the standalone bill, but do you have any idea, just in terms of how many more businesses, whether in numbers or percentages, that proposal would impact and help as opposed to the one that's in the budget?
Sure, I can give you a rough number, an idea. And as mentioned earlier today, some of the materials or some of the information and data isn't that easy to identify. It doesn't always rank or give that data based on how certain businesses incorporated. But using some of the governor's numbers and some of our own insight into small businesses across New York State, we estimate that expanding the governor's proposal will increase at the very least another 65,000 small businesses. That's how many businesses will fit through those two gates that you would need to, less than 100 employees, and then a certain level of income. So combined with the governor's proposal that includes, or that would benefit 36,000 businesses, we are hopeful that a full proposal could benefit close to 100,000 small businesses across the state. And with the business income cap, you're really talking about true small businesses.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions we have for you today.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next, we have a panel, Indivisible Harlem, Rebecca Salatan, Allison Downing, and to be joined by Elizabeth Filicello, from Member of Empire State Indivisible. Just a reminder to the two from Indivisible Harlem, you have five minutes to share amongst for the two of you, so just make sure you, whoever goes first, leave time for the second person so that everybody's happy and we get to hear your important remarks. And just before you get started, I just want to go through some of the next witnesses, American Automotive Leasing Association, New York State Assessors Association, and DSA Debt and Finance Working Group Representative. Those people just make their way down if you're not already sitting down. You can choose how you want to go first, whoever wants to go first. Just stand for yourself. Thank you.
Hi.
Feel free to start.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Allison Downing, and I live in Morningside Heights in Manhattan, represented by Senator Robert Jackson and Assemblymember Danny O'Donnell. Here is one of 20 million stories about how New York's abject failure to appropriately tax its most fortunate residents has affected me. I'm fine. I'm not on Medicaid. I don't live in public housing. My son last attended a public school almost 10 years ago, and I work from home, so I'm not in public transit every day. I have a really nice life, except, that is, for the intense and persistent terror that our fragile democracy is collapsing under the weight of all the money that is pressing down on us instead of lifting us up. So I will speak on behalf of my neighbors and fellow New Yorkers for whom the weight of that money is anguishingly heavy. I live across the street from a shelter for mothers with young children, who I believe are domestic violence victims, although they won't tell me for sure whether that's the case, which they shouldn't. Things had not gone well for me when my family and I moved onto our street, but then I unpacked, I had been stressed about things. I unpacked, I settled in, and I started paying attention to the activity at the shelter across the street. This home of last refuge for so many of my neighbors is a beehive of activity. People are constantly moving in and out. Little babies are crying because it's too early or too late, but they have no choice. They can't nap. The kids have to get on school buses at 6:30 in the morning because it takes so long to get to their faraway schools. Moms are crying into their phones that they need their WIC benefits, and kids are playing down the street in the park, sometimes without things like winter coats or gloves. I realize that as miserable as my move had been, it was nothing compared to what these families had been going through all the time. Every day, I'm a passive observer of an unintentional eavesdropper on stresses and traumas that eclipse almost anything I have ever gone through. Every day, I worry for my neighbors, these moms and their children, who have no certainty that they will end up safe. So I am here for them. New York has enough money to properly house all of our families, especially ones in trauma. New York has enough money not to make domestic violence victims work 12 hours a day. New York has enough money to make sure that each child can get a wonderful education close to home, and you have the power to make it happen. You can choose to help the vulnerable. You can choose to reshape our system so that the extremely lucky share their great good fortune with those who most need the help. I understand that the budget dynamics unduly favor the executive, but I would urge you to nevertheless stand together and insist that you will not vote for any budget that does not properly tax the extraordinarily wealthy. If all of you and all of your colleagues stood together and said, "No, we will not choose Medicaid and CFE funding. We will not say no to the climate because we only have enough to say yes to transit cops. We will not take from upstate housing to give to Long Island senior centers. We will vote for a system in which the billionaires protect the vulnerable." You would change the world. The trying to do this is incredibly important. There is no shame in trying to change the world, and in fact, the shame is in not trying. I ask you to refuse to pass any budget that doesn't require billionaires and ultra-millionaires to help out their neighbors, and especially don't give oligarchs who use New York City real estate as a place to launder and park their vast wealth any passes whatsoever. We are all in this together, and you, as the people's elected representatives, get to decide whether you want to help keep 9,000 people's unimaginable wealth remain untouched, or whether you want to help 20 million New Yorkers' lives get better. Thank you. Becky. Sorry if I took too much.
I'm Becky Salatan. I'm a member of Indivisible Harlem, which is a citizen action group that is enthusiastically and passionately joined in the Budget Justice Campaign, along with a number of advocacy groups. I'm also constituent of Senator Brian Benjamin here and Assemblymember O'Donnell. I just want to, really strikes me, being here, I've never testified before, and I know that we are not the people you usually hear from, we're not the numbers people, the nuts-and-bolts people. And we know that often, the people you are hearing from are people who are talking about needs, our advocacy partners here to talk to the various committees that deal with the issues that they're concerned with. And so, many of us got into activism because, you know, we're the blue wave, we're the folks who were perhaps a little asleep at the wheel before 2016, and we got in because we had particular issues we were concerned about in this contemporary landscape, environment, reproductive rights, and so on. And a lot of advances, from our point of view, happened last year, thanks to change in the structure of the legislature here in New York. But issues that we cared about that had to do with spending hit a complete wall, and as we got to know our advocacy partners who'd worked on those issues year after year after year, we knew that that was not a new thing. The year after year, they were being told, "There's not enough money. We're in austerity times. We can't afford it." Some of us are personally impacted by those issues. Some of us are here on behalf of those who we work with daily on these campaigns, who are impacted. In Indivisible Harlem, for example, yesterday, two of our members took off the time from work, put their kids in childcare, and we're here with AQE to talk about the need for education funding, the $4 billion in CFE that was promised 10 years ago and court-ordered and still has not been paid. But at any rate, so some of us are personally impacted, some of us are here on their behalf. But, so some of the people in those polls you've heard about are the people who are personally impacted, but some of them are people like us, who, as Allison said, don't necessarily have the strongest personal stake, but we care about the state of our state and what it's becoming. I put two kids through public schools in New York City. I saw firsthand, as a head of PTA fundraising for two years, how inequitable this system is. My kids were in a richer, better-heeled school with parents who could kick in. So we, you know, we're here because we care about what that school is beginning. Those two girls have now graduated college. I want them to be able to settle in New York, but I worry not about just the future that they're going to be able to make, but the future that they are, the state, of the state that they're inheriting. This extremely unequal place that is losing its social, sorry about that, that is having its social fabric rent and its physical infrastructure taxed, that is not a good thing for any of us, and there's no reason it should be so. We're an extremely wealthy state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Filicella, and I am part of a neighbor group, Morningside Heights Resistance.
Can you pull the mic up a little closer to your mouth?
Sure.
Thank you.
I am a member of Morningside Heights Resistance. We are a neighbor group to Indivisible Harlem. We're also working on budget justice, and I'm speaking on behalf of my tenant association I live in a rent-stabilized building in the Manhattan Valley neighborhood in New York City. Most of my neighbors have lived there more than 15 years. It's a stable, diverse building with continuity at this point over two, sometimes three generations. I would like to focus on the work that my neighbors do. We work a wide variety of jobs, which I've listed. Some of these are providing services, others are contributing to revenue-generating industries. As a group, we are providing important services. Many of us came to New York, whether it was from other countries or other states, for the economic and professional opportunities that were offered. And so, in short, our building generates tremendous value through the work that my neighbors and I do. Yet every year, not only are our lives impacted directly or indirectly by the state budget, our work, our professional lives are too, our working lives, whether this is inadequate funding for hospitals or schools that my neighbors work in, cuts to publicly funded continuing education or training programs, reduction in grants for cultural programming, or the ongoing deterioration of basic infrastructure, like the subways and roads that we use to get to and from work. And we are told every year that these cuts are necessary, that they are unavoidable, that there is austerity in New York. In this section, I'm going to read word for word. And yet, the block we live on, including the building we live in, point to something very different. point to something very different. In the last 10 years, almost two-thirds of the buildings on my block were sold. Most of those buildings are now owned by just two landlords. Our building, which caps a corner of the block, was the most recent sale. It contains 49 apartments, almost a third of which are empty. In 2018, the building's market value was roughly $5 million. The tax-assessed value was $2 million. Later that year, it sold for close to $26 million. Who gains in this kind of predatory scenario? Not the tax roll. This is a building that sold for $26 million. The next year, that sale had no impact on its tax-assessed value at the city level. So the annual property taxes paid to New York City on this building that sold for $26 million in 2019 was $250,000, less than 1% of the sale price. Assuming the mortgage tax was paid, it would have been roughly $324,000 to the city and $90,000 to the state. No transfer tax was paid, we don't know why. And in terms of state income tax, the LLC is registered in Delaware. And so the answer to this question, who gains in this kind of predatory scenario, is only the owner, its lender, JP Morgan Chase, a bank that happened to receive an enormous public bailout in 2008, and perhaps the political campaigns that the owner and that the bank contribute to, to maintain the status quo. The new rent laws that passed last year are critical protections, but there is a looming sense in our building that we are up against something much larger. We are supporting the 14 revenue proposals that were presented by Strong Economy for All. They would not directly or immediately remedy the situation in my building, but they would begin to address the enormous damage that is caused when speculation takes over a neighborhood. Namely, our building has been destabilized. And there is a sense among my neighbors that we generate value for New York, and yet, we are in a squeeze. Most of us are working low-to-moderate income jobs. We can't simply opt out of underfunded private services, underfunded public services for private services. And I'll close there, sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the written also. Senator. Brian Benjamin.
Yes.
First of all, I want to, just one, first of all, I want to say, I am, wait, five minutes for me, please? Isn't this five minutes? It's three.
It's three this time.
Three minutes, we'll get the paper.
All right, I'll be quick. First of all, I want to say, I really appreciate the work of Indivisible Harlem and Empire, Indivisible, Empire State Indivisible, because they have done a lot of good stuff, and I've seen it firsthand. So I want to thank you for all of your hard work and your activism. Let me ask a real basic question. There are 14 proposals here that we received from the Strong Economy for All Coalition. Can you, each of you, if you're interested, by the way, I thought you were all my constituents, I'm sorry. Now I know, Allison, that you're not.
I'm not. I will be probably after redistricting, but I'm not right now.
But anyway, can you, just quickly, let me know which ones of these, if you had to pick two or three, not all 14, really appeal to you, and why? Starting with you, Becky.
I don't, I don't think that's our role, I think that's your role. Our role is to say, these are the needs, the wealth is there. Find the, what, you know, you have the folks from Fiscal Policy Institute, you have the Strong Economy for All folks, they know the laws far better than we do. Work with them, but don't pick off one little thing and think that's going to be enough. We're really talking about a package that can address the real needs that there are, and start to make a down payment on the climate and all the other things that we, that are critically at issue.
That's a fair point. There is a 2% spending cap that is there. Whether, you know, we could talk about that another time.
It's not the law.
Fair enough. So you don't want to answer the question?
Excuse me?
You don't have any particular favorites here? Or, you think they all agree?
We can talk offline about that, and pros and cons is, I know you've been studying them and examining them, but again, we're not the experts in the tax measures. I know this is a tax committee, but there are a number, there's a whole buffet of possibilities here. The point is, there's lots.
Right.
What I was trying to address in my testimony, and this is in some of the 14 proposals, is that work, necessary work, everyday work, is taxed. We all pay taxes, and there is this sense that particularly the real estate industry is, I don't even know who owns my building. That they are completely, there's a kind of lawlessness or an unaccountability. And so, any of these, the luxury land tax, for example, seems incredibly important. I mean, although that, again, is not my district, it's, Hudson Yards was built gerrymandering a map to include Harlem, in order to qualify for the EB5 program, I believe it was.
Sorry.
Which is criminal, and yet, this has become normal. And so, any of these measures that somehow try to recalibrate something which has clearly gone kind of very wrong, and for me, that is very much through real estate.
Thank you very much.
Go to Assemblyman Bronstein first.
Thank you, I just want to make a quick statement. You talked about your concern about the inequity in the property tax system, and the mayor and the city council have released the recommendations of a commission to fix a lot of that inequity. The more detailed proposal is going to come out this summer, and many of us here are going to work to try and see if we, it has to come through the state, and we're going to try to make those changes to level the playing field. Because right now, like you pointed out, extremely expensive properties are paying effective property tax rates lower than middle-income families, especially in the outer boroughs. So, we're working to make those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblywoman Dickens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony, and I want to say that this is the first time I've really heard anyone bring up the, what happened with the Hudson Yards, about the map was drawn up the river in order to include Harlem, so that it would qualify for the Opportunity Zone credits. What are you proposing to do about it? I've been, I've written about it, I wrote an article about it, and I have been hollering about it. And I have not had anybody to join in with me in that.
I have to admit, I have, I'm not an expert in any of that, but I am, coming at it from just the narrative point of view, I think that the more people know about this, the more they know that there are things that happen that are very wrong, but that are in fact legal. And so, how to somehow get those things more closely in line? And I think a piece of that is more conversation and public education on these.
Not here, you ask me, and I'll tell you how it got done.
Can I just add on to that? That that public outreach and pressure is growing. And I think you will not find yourself as alone as you may have found yourself before, because we are determined to continue that until people understand what these practices are, what the opportunities are, what the inequities in our budget process are, and you will be facing a mounting tide of pushback, it's already happening. You see it in the press, you see it in the response from your constituents.
Because as a result of that, the Harlem community did not benefit at all.
Yes, we know.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you three for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, American Automotive Leasing Association, David Rosen. I wouldn't want to come after Indivisible, I don't know.
Good afternoon, my name is David Rosen, General Counsel for the American Automotive Leasing Association. The Association represents fleet leasing companies operating across the United States. Fleet leased vehicles are leased to small businesses, nonprofits, government entities, and corporations with small divisions. And the vehicles range from passenger cars to cargo vans, trucks that are customized and outfitted for a specific business purpose. These are vehicles that you see in your communities across New York every day, and are operated by your constituents that are operating these sort of entities and businesses. You know, for example, being electrical plumbing repair service providers, telecommunications installation providers, beverage and food distributors, and fuel delivery companies. And in New York, the members of this organization own over 82,000 vehicles on New York roads, and approximately a third of those are replaced each year with safer and more fuel-efficient vehicles. Commercial motor vehicle leases have a unique structure that encourages customers to keep newer, safer, and cleaner motor vehicles on New York roads. The, unlike conventional consumer motor vehicle leases, commercial leases are essentially month-to-month after an initial stated term of around a year. Whenever the customer decides to return the vehicle, an adjustment is made to the lease obligation based on how much that vehicle was expected to be worth at the time that vehicle was turned in, and how much that vehicle is actually worth when it is sold at auction, at a wholesale auction. That adjustment, which is called a track adjustment under a certain provision of the lease, basically results in either a payment, additional payment to the lessor, to the fleet leasing company, or back to the business that's leasing the vehicle. If the vehicle is in better condition and has a higher actual value than what was expected under the lease, that business that's leasing the vehicle gets an additional refund of overpaid rent. And conversely, if the vehicle is in worse shape because the lessee keeps it for longer, or it's subjected to intense use, an additional rent payment, additional lease payment is due to the lessor. And basically, this provides businesses with an economic incentive to keep their vehicles in good shape. In 1992, the legislature passed a law that applies to these sort of lease transactions for sales tax purposes, where the tax is due on the first 32 months, and then on a month-to-month basis. However, the legislature failed to specifically address what is the hallmark of this transaction, which is that lease payment adjustment of the consideration due under the lease. Currently, if there's additional consideration paid to the lessor, sales taxes is logically paid on that. However, the Department of Taxation and Finance has taken the position that if a customer receives a refund back of that total consideration, it is not entitled to receive the benefit of the sales tax overpaid on that overpaid lease consideration. And New York is the only state in the country that collects sales tax on the underpayments when additional payment is made to the lessor, but not provide any consideration back for sales taxes on the overpayment. ALA and its members request that the provisions contained in Senate Bill S3067A by Senator Breslin, and Assembly Bill A4070A by Assemblyman Schiminger, be included in the final enacted budget that would correct this unfair situation. Currently, all companies, fleet leasing companies and other retailers in New York fill out a sales tax return every year, or every month, or fill out every quarter, but with monthly remittances. This would be the same process under these proposed measures that we're discussing here. No change would be required to the department's systems or processes, and refunds would be provided to these businesses operating in New York that are keeping their vehicles in good shape and receiving a refund of lease consideration. Essentially, legislation corrects the unfair tax treatment by allowing these leasing companies to adjust their taxable sales to accommodate track underpayments and overpayments, instead of the current situation where the state collects sales taxes on any additional payments made due to additional payments made to leasing companies, but doesn't provide any sales tax consideration back to customers for refunds that are made by the lessor due to refunds of overpayments made to businesses in this state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for being here. Thank you. Next, New York State Assessors Association, Scott Sheddler and Warren Wheeler.
Good evening, I will cut to the chase. My name is Warren Wheeler, I'm the Executive Director for the New York State Assessors Association. And with me here is the President of our association, Scott Sheddler. You've all got our written testimony, but I did want to just jump right in and just say that we oppose any changes to STAR. Right now, we would like to see there be no forced moving over from the exemption into the STAR check program. Currently, there's enough confusion going on, and we feel this would only exacerbate that. One thing we would like to push for would be to have the exemption and the STAR check credit be equal. There shouldn't be an increased benefit for one over the other, considering they're supposedly for the same tax savings for the school taxes. And lastly, we'd like to offer some advice on streamlining the program for our senior citizens, which we refer to as the 467 with limited income, specifically those individuals that are not required to file income taxes. As you may be aware, there's been some confusion with the overburdening of excessive requiring of information for them. So that's what I've got on STAR, and I'll turn it over to Scott now.
Okay, I'm just going to get right to the points in summary before the Arctic air hits us in the whole state of New York. Last year, I testified before you on a number of factors that impacted STAR. Well, guess what, I had a crystal ball. Every one of those issues came true. The public was frustrated with the changes. Although the Department of Taxation and Finance, under the leadership of Commissioner Smith, has made an unbelievable effort to assist us in this change, there's been frustration throughout the entire state. We're dealing with problems with seniors and other property owners that are just dealing with all these changes. So as we testified last year, everything has come true. The public is totally stressed on this issue. But I do recognize that the Commissioner and his, every level of his staff and DTF have been working with us to try to work out a lot of these issues. Basically, I want to conclude with basically saying, as you're concluding tonight, and you're looking at all these issues, and you're looking to formulate your own budgets in both Assembly and the Senate, I want you to think about some of the things that the Harlem group said. They pointed out some good facts. Big business is benefiting in certain circumstances. Please, if you're looking at changing any of proposed tax exemptions for big businesses, telecommunications companies, like Assembly Bill 8201 and Senate Bill 6511, listen to the people from Harlem that they talked about that loophole in that legislation that allowed Hudson Yards to get approved and tie into Harlem. These similar bills are looking to do the same thing. They're looking to give tax exemptions to multimillion, billion-dollar companies at the expense of the property owners that struggle every day and are dealing with the salt issue, as well as the current rebate program expiring. So keep these in mind when you're developing your own budgets, and just keep all our residents in mind first. And I want to thank you, and safe travels tonight.
Thank you, we have a question from Sandy Galif.
Just a quick question. Homestead, non-homestead with condominiums? I know you have an opinion to support what the governor has proposed, but it doesn't go far enough. And you'd like to see more, an extension of that. Could you elaborate on it?
Well, you know, it's probably one of the few assessors that don't have any condos to deal with. I'm speaking on behalf of those that I have spoken with that do have condominiums. And the biggest issue that you're aware of is that it's kind of like a loophole, where it offers, it's basically a tax break for those individuals that purchase the property under condominium ownership. If you look at the property from the road, you cannot tell whether it's a single-family or a condo, but when you go to look at the tax bill, or a condo, but when you go to look at the tax bill, there's a significant difference, sometimes as much as 30 to 40% in reduction in the taxes just because it's received condominium status. So, our association has been, for as long as I've been a part of this association, advocating for the end to the condominiums going forward so that they would be treated like every other property and pay their fair share.
Right, and New York City, that's one of the proposals, actually, in the, in the New York City Commission report, dealing with the condominiums and co-ops. Whether it will happen or not, I don't know, but it's in the bill.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Our last witness is, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing correctly, Nahol, Niall Pfeffer here? Oh, okay.
Noel Pfeffer.
Noel, okay. Sure, go ahead.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here. My name is Noel Pfeffer. I'm a student studying tax and constitutional law at NYU. I'm here today representing DSA, the Democratic Socialists of America. I want to open with some words from former New York Governor Franklin Delano Roosevelt, who in 1932, at the Democratic Convention declared, "While they prey of economic laws, men and women are starving. We must lay hold of the fact that economic laws are not made by nature, they are made by human beings." It's a simple idea, but it has radical implications. It means that there's no such thing as a free market, because markets and property, for that matter, are social constructs. It means that extreme levels of racial disparities and economic inequality are not natural or inevitable, they're a function of public policy. Finally, it means that we have a responsibility to establish democratic control over markets which are no longer serving the public good. And let me be clear, in case anyone in this room is under any illusions, market definitions of growth and efficiency are killing us. The quintessential example is climate change, where markets consistently refuse to account for the long-term costs of flooding, drought, and extreme weather, but we see the human tolls to modifying healthcare, education, housing, and water across the United States. I find the history of the American corporation instructive. Historically, state governments granted corporate status to companies set up to build critical infrastructure like canals, railroads, bridges. Corporate status was a reward for companies with a credible commitment to advancing the public interest. Today's corporations are multinational giants with no loyalty to the communities they occupy. While some add real value, countless others rely on monopoly power and information asymmetries to exploit both their employees and consumers. Unbridled markets also injure our democracy. Equity is the lifeblood of democracy, which hinges on the egalitarian principle of one person, one vote. Extreme economic inequality translates into extreme political inequality, turning our government into an oligarchy. American billionaires acting through the tax code have dramatically undermined our democracy, and we see the consequences every day in Washington. With this framework in mind, cognizant of the fact that budgets express our values, and our values demand that billionaires pay their fair share, I'll now outline my submitted testimony. Taxing the rich isn't easy, and we propose a three-pronged strategy: meaningful new or increased taxes on wealth, ultra-high incomes, and big corporations. With this framework in mind, first, we strongly support wealth taxation, as has been popularized by Senators Bernie Sanders and Elizabeth Warren. We also propose raising taxes on wealth by reforming our states and gift tax and through property tax reform, such as raising taxes on pied-à-terre, luxury land, and yachts and jets. We also call for eliminating Sections 421A, 485A, and 581, which provide wealthy property owners with immense and unconscionable subsidies. Second, we believe that we can follow the lead of New Jersey and California in raising income taxes on ultra-millionaires, but we also recognize that most of the income enjoyed by the wealthy comes from investments. These receive huge tax benefits under federal law. Long-term capital gains are taxed at half of the normal rate, and that's why we propose a surcharge on long-term capital gains to offset federal tax subsidies. Third, we are committed to raising taxes on the corporate sector. In 2015, New York reformed its corporate tax to lower overall rates and eliminate the special tax on banks. It's time to reverse this trend, and we support a progressive reform of rates for the general business corporation tax. We're especially concerned with the destabilizing effects of speculation and greed in the financial sector. We support restoring New York's stock transfer tax imposed from 1905 to 1981 and rebated at a 100% rate ever since. And we support expanding the tax to derivatives, synthetic debt obligations, and other securities. In summary, taxing the rich is actually pretty simple. You're taking a big chunk of money and moving it from investments made by the most wealthy to those made by democracy, and we can't talk about tax reform without talking about these democratic investments. Our proposals are rooted in a conviction that investing in teachers and medical professionals, social workers, construction workers, and displaced workers transitioning to a new economy is more economically productive than leaving capital locked up in investments made by and for the wealthy. The market is failing as a valuation mechanism. We can't save our planet or our democracy without significant investments in healthcare, education, housing, and a Green New Deal. As one of the wealthiest states in America, New York has the financial resources to fund these needs. The tax dollars are available, we just need to know where to look. In this 2020 budget cycle, we must reject austerity and begin to create a budget and tax system that reflects our values of a just society for all. Finally, I know it's been a long day, but I love Senator Benjamin's question about what is fairness in tax, and if you'll indulge me, I'd love a chance to respond.
You'll be able to do that at some later time. But just stick around, you'll be able to have that conversation. So, this is the end of all of the witnesses for the tax hearing, and before we officially conclude this hearing, I just, on behalf of Senator Liz Krueger, myself, want to take a moment to thank all of our staffs who have worked for these several weeks till the last night, almost midnight, and on the weekends to make sure that these hearings ran as smoothly as they had. They're sort of the silent people behind, they're the people behind the scenes, but they get a lot of credit for this. Senator Krueger, did you want to?
I didn't say it exactly correctly. Please pause both of our staffs. Thank you.
So, thank you. This concludes the tax hearing. It also concludes the joint fiscal committee's hearings on the executive budget. We look forward, we've appreciated all of the comments that we've received, as well as testimonies from individuals, and look forward to negotiations as we move forward, taking into consideration all of the comments that we've heard, not only today, but all of the other days that we've had these hearings. Thank you very much.